All right, so it's 5:30. We'll call the meeting to order. And first up is the consent agenda. We don't have any minutes listed or any dates for the minutes, but we have warrants AP 2041, AP 2041 S, AP 2042, and AP 2042 S. We have a Hadley Police Department promotional policy. We have an Asparagus Capital of the World proclamation by the Select Board, which I will pull out. And we have a North Hadley Sugar Shack on-premise liquor license confirmation of our previous vote. Water or sewer and water commitment to be ratified. And Hadley Police Department Special Police Officer appointments for Ethan Kraus and Christian Lowell, which I assume would like to be pulled out.
So moved.
All right, so let's do. Chief, did you want to talk about the promotion or do you just want to lump it in there?
The policy itself is it's more of a housekeeping issue. Something that we've gone through the union for. We're, you know, we're struggling with supervision after Sergeant Harrow had left and with everything that's going on right now. So I wanted to enact a acting supervisor, some acting supervisor provisions. And I want to just make sure that the town and the department have full control over the policy and that everything's kind of out in the open. So the policy, you'll see that only the stuff in red is the adjustments and they're very minor. They just give us a little bit more control over kind of an acting training policy.
Okay, so we pulled out Asparagus Capital proclamation and the appointments and everything else. We have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
All right, so I'll do the, actually you're here, chief. So let's do the appointments of Ethan Kraus and Christian Lowell.
Okay. They're not, they're not on here just because I'm sure if you ask David and Jennifer, we've been kind of a pain in the butt with them as far as getting stuff in on time. Going on, this is a process as well as the supervisory policy that we literally started months ago. Position, we're in a position right now where we just can't sit on these things any longer. So we, we were, we basically completed the process and these are the two folks that, that we have selected. Ethan Kraus resides in West Hatfield. He's a graduate of Frontier Regional. He has an associate's degree in criminal justice from GCC. What is a security officer at Deerfield Academy and he's also a corporal in the United States Marine Corps Reserve. He completed his basic reserve academy in March of 2019. Christian Lowell resides in Hardwick of Quabon Regional High School. In 2018, he attended the Reserve Police Academy where he was president of his class. He has been employed as a private security guard for G4S since September of 2019 and has also been a call force member of the Hardwick Fire Department since 2010. We will try not to hold that against him. We'll see how it works. So I would, both of these candidates have aspirations to become full-time police officers. So they fit all of the qualifications. They have all the necessary certifications to begin our field training process immediately. As you all know, we have three individuals in the academy right now. The goal is to get them out because we need officers as, as much as, you know, we ever have right now. So I would recommend that these two individuals be appointed as special police officers so that we can begin their training.
So moved. Welcome aboard.
Hang on.
We need a second.
Zoom meetings don't change the rules, Joyce.
They don't. I thought I could change the rules, Mike. No.
It's worth a shot, I guess.
I guess so, yes.
Any further discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Hey, while we have Mike on, because I think he's probably doesn't have anything else, right, Mike?
No, I just was going to hang around for a little bit to listen to some of the budget discussion, but I had nothing to present or anything.
Did you want to talk at all about, did you end up signing the MOU or anything with the Board of Health at all?
Dick actually responded to my email earlier today and said that he was going to sign it and get a copy of it here at some point. He may have dropped it off downstairs and maybe nobody called upstairs to tell me, but I have not yet seen it. I told him within the email that he needed to, we needed to have a signed copy of that before we can, you know, assist in certain ways, so.
Okay, so that's nothing that we, that's nothing that you want to mention right now?
No, no, it's something that I hope we're not even going to have to use. But, you know, we do need a, we do need a signature from him, so. But everything has been sent. He just, I think he just needs to speak with Mr. Mish. Possibly Emma. I'm not sure how the quorum situation works with the Board of Health, but we need their signatures on that document.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so next up is the proclamation naming Hadley, Massachusetts, the Asparagus Capital of the world. Go ahead and read it. It's not too long. Whereas the town of Hadley has a long history of agricultural production and is dedicated to preserving agriculture for the future. And whereas the farmers of the town of Hadley have been producing Hadley grass for more than 100 years. And whereas the town of Hadley has been blessed with a deep layer of sandy loam as part of the Connecticut River Valley that has allowed our dedicated farming families to produce the best asparagus in the world. And whereas the town of Hadley is experiencing a resurgence in growing asparagus. And whereas the town of Hadley has over 100 acres of land producing the best asparagus. Now, therefore, we, the Select Board of the Town of Hadley, Massachusetts, on behalf of the inhabitants, declare that the town of Hadley is the Asparagus Capital of the world, given the sixth day of May in the year 2020.
Hey, hey, yay.
All right.
So, so moved. Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, well, thanks to Tom Moskowitz for bringing up that idea. So next up. All right, let's do public comments. Does anybody here have public comments? Jennifer, do you want to unmute people one at a time or?
Sure. I'm going to start with Jane. Jane, do you have public comments?
No, thank you. Just listening.
Okay. I have a feeling Dan Zadonic is here for, I have a feeling that Dan Lindich, the chief and Susan are all here for the budget build wire. Do you have public comments?
No.
Who is Toshiba?
Toshiba is not letting me unmute them, so I don't know who they are.
Okay.
Oh, there it is. Toshiba, do you have public comments?
No, I do not. I'm here just to do.
Okay. And Paul from Kestrel, do you have public comments?
It's actually Kristen from Kestrel.
Kristen, I'm sorry.
That's okay. No, I'm here for an agenda item for the Mount Hollyack Range.
Okay, sorry, Kristen.
That's okay. Thanks.
Okay.
That's everybody.
No public comments, so we'll move on. Let's do Kestrel Land Trust. Let's see, David, do you want to talk for a minute about this? Are we ready to go forward with this at this point?
Yes, so we've been into a conversation with the Conservation Commission, Paul Gagnon, the town attorney, about this. It seems like there are several moving pieces. And Conservation Commission has had, has not had a chance to take their official action, which is scheduled, I think, for the 12th of May. So I think we're in a position of just for the sake of adhering to the Select Board policy of waiting for the Conservation Commission to take their action, that we should defer this item until May 20th.
Okay. Sounds good to me. Kristen, did you want to say anything while you were here?
No, I think that's fine. I just make you aware of the timeline, so we are still planning to close everything by June 30th, if possible. We have the town watershed land, a landowner who chooses to be anonymous until they're ready to announce it. And then we have a couple in South Hadley and one in Amherst, but anyway, it's all coming together as one. The Article 97 language that the town of Hadley has approved is still making its way through the legislative process. We have asked for an extension on the grant due to the pandemic delays, but we have not heard back yet. So until further notice, we're trying to close everything by June 30th. So May 20th, I think, is fine. We don't want to extend it much longer, though, if that's possible.
Okay, sounds good.
All right, thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, so how about the ambulance agreement, David? Are we going to do that tonight or is that not ready?
So the chief, Chief Spankable, are you on board?
Yep, I'm here.
Okay. So we got a flurry of documents late in the date today. And so maybe that we do the official review and signing on, on the 20th as well. But Chief, it sounds like you could talk to me, talk to us rather, about the contours of what we've worked out. I think it should be agreeable to everybody, but if you could just run us through where we are.
Sure, so I sent out the, the draft contract to the ambulance committee, I think, yesterday for review. It's pretty minor changes that we had discussed in our meeting. And then the additional items that came out, I had asked Mike Rowaka to update the prices for the next three fiscal years, which represents a 2% increase rather than a 5.5%, which is quite nice per year. And then he also put together the document, which explains the payment options and then also the subsidy return. So if we reach milestones, what that return would be for us. And then the other documents were just the non collusion form, the state taxes, and all the other documents that were in the original one. So the only real changes are in that portion of the draft document. And if, the only addition that wasn't added in there is we had requested if Molly Keegan would be willing to stay on the committee, we would just add an additional person under towns person to that committee. And because we need to have one active representative from the Select Board as, as one of the members of the Oversight Committee. So that's the only portion that is not in there right now, which we'd like to add if possible. If Molly agrees.
Is Molly willing to do that? You're muted, Molly.
Maybe that's her response.
No, as, as long as Mike thinks it's helpful, I'm happy to. I think the group's working well right now. And there's some history there, so if the board's willing to add, obviously, we need Select Board representation on the committee.
I'd like to volunteer for that.
That would be really appreciated because that kind of brings back the, the original ambulance committee.
Task force.
On that, so, you know, I think you guys have tasked us with over this next contract to start reviewing what direction we're going in. So it's nice to have folks that are, you know, already neck deep in it. Not that we can't add additional. If folks want to come and attend, they're more than welcome to. The Oversight portion, however, when we review response numbers, there is some sensitive information that we would just have to keep sensitive. But other than that, you know, we're open to anybody being a part of it.
We want to appoint you to that committee now, Joyce, and Molly, effective July 1st, or should we wait on that?
That would be fine. Whoever, actually, it would have to be when elections take place, correct, Molly, while you're, when you go off?
Right, yeah.
Okay. All right, so we'll move on. David, if you could give the COVID-19 update and then we'll go into the tri board meeting.
Okay, so the COVID-19 update, everybody should be checking the daily situation reports at www.hadleyma.org. Lots of resources there. Chief Spankable does a tremendous job updating that on a regular basis. Where are we? I'm sorry, I have some notes that I'm searching around. Here we go. So the Unified Command continues to work, meet bi-weekly. Hampshire County collectively seems to be doing a very good job of preventing the spread of the coronavirus. Our numbers are very favorable when compared to other counties in the Commonwealth. The impact upon the local economy is devastating and we'll be talking a little bit about that later on. I did receive information from the Community Development Block Grant, federal emergency, local aid. Our Regional Planning Agency, the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission, has received a $20 million allotment to be distributed to cities and towns in the Hampton, Hampshire County area. Molly and I will be talking to the Amherst Area Chamber of Commerce about ideas about what would be the best use for support of that money to support businesses. This is above and beyond the $550,000 Community Development Block Grant application that we have submitted to support services to seniors and housing rehabilitation to qualifying homeowners in the town of Hadley.
Okay, and the state numbers say that as of close of business today, we're up to 33 confirmed cases in town. So not, not a huge increase from last week, so we're kind of pretty steady. All right, chief, do you have anything to add for COVID-19 or you? He's busy.
As we've said here at work, we're very happy to be on this side of 495 now, instead of the other side.
Absolutely. Okay, so we'll go into the tri board meeting. Let's see. Select Board Finance Committee, School Department, we meet to review and adjust the FY21 budget and annual town meeting warrant. So let's start with the, the warrant. We'll go through that. We it doesn't look like it shrunk that much. Are we going to take some of these items off?
Yeah, so I just got a message from the planning board that they're taking two or three of their planning board articles off. So I haven't caught up to those notes, but they've taken off Megan's Way. The definitions.
Okay.
So Articles 26 and 22 are going to be deferred to the fall.
Okay. Are we in our Unified Command, we had talked a little bit about, you know, what the, what the plan was. Is Randy going to be joining us tonight or? Let's see.
Who?
Randy Iser.
I asked him to. Is he, is he on board?
Don't see him, so we can, we can circle back to this, I guess. Let's move on to the budget.
Let me just give you an update as to town meeting. There is a Senate bill, which has just been approved, has not been enacted by the governor yet, to allow cities and towns to reduce the quorum for their town meetings. There are conditions to those, that reduction of quorum. Our quorum happens to be 100 and we could reduce it to as little as 10% of our required quorum. That would be 10 people. If we took that option based upon my very quick reading of the Senate bill, we would have to pass only the budget and any other article, which could not be deferred until to July 1st. So we would be, if we took that option, we would be restricting our legislative actions to just nine articles at most on a 26 warrant, article warrant. So this is something, obviously, we want to take a closer look at and look at the final language when it gets enacted. But it is an option.
Means it's going to be a very long special town meeting in the fall.
Yeah.
But I just have a question on that is, we could have a 10-person quorum, but that would be restrict the meeting to no more than 10 people? I mean, that would be the tricky part about it is we might have to plan still for 200 people, even though quorum, though quorum is 10.
Yeah, the legislative bodies for municipalities are exempt from the 10-person restriction. So we don't have to worry about that part.
I, I think the reduction in quorum is just in case, you know, we're sitting there on town meeting floor and we don't get the 100 people, we can vote at that point, right, with the Select Board and the moderator to reduce it to 10 people or whatever we'd like. Is that what you're thinking, David?
Yeah, that's my thinking. Of course, we'll, we'll take a closer look at the requirements of the law, but yeah, that's, that's an option. If we can't make quorum, that's one thing we can do is reduce the quorum, but it requires us to reduce the warrant.
Yeah, it basically means that the Select Board and the Finance Committee could just vote it, vote it through. Right? I mean, there's your 10 right there.
Yeah.
Registered voters.
Yep.
All right. Unless anybody else has anything on that for now, we'll move on to the budget talks. David, you want to kind of give us an answer? And then we can hear.
Set the table a little bit. Okay, so you know, I've, I've said before that we've had to reduce our revenue estimates by over $800,000 or combined total of a north of $1,200,000 in going to the shortfall in the budget. Have balanced the budget. We did have a very long conversation with Sean Crony, the Deputy Director of the Division of Local Services about FY 2020 and FY 2021. There is a lot of uncertainty all over the place at the state level. People are trying to put things together. What came out of our discussion is that you need to have a plan for dealing whatever may come your way. And the budget narrative that I put together for this revised budget, I emphasized defense in depth. And that is our plan. This is not just a slogan, but it is a plan, which is multi-year, adaptable, flexible. Can it be changed to address whatever may come? Takes into account the revised downward revenue figures, relies on a progression of backstops, reinforcing backstops, reinforcing reserves with free cash and other specials funds. And it, it is the basis by which I have balanced this budget. One of the things that we talked about was the impact upon the tax rate. There are lots of variables that go into making the tax rate right now. And I think Dan Zadonic is on the line somewhere here. We're looking at an increase of valuation for all classes of residential. That will help us in either keeping the tax rate stable or even reducing that tax rate, but that's something we need to work on for the fall town meeting. And there are a million variables that we need to adjust, so there's a certain amount of finesse that needs to go into that. So careful planning to achieve the goal of keeping the tax burden as, as little as possible and also thinking long-term to avoid giant tax increases for FY 2022. We will definitely need to go to a town, to town meeting progression to achieve these budgetary budgetary feats. I have outlined what those town meetings for the next two years might look like and how to use reserves judiciously as well as building stabilization for future use. We've had to adjust all the goals that the Select Board set out in order to originally set up the FY21 budget. And that's outlined in the budget narrative. We can achieve some of these goals. But in many cases, we've gone enough actively expanding the government to now we're in a defensive crouch. The only other issue that we're still trying to wrestle with is the OPEB contribution. I had originally cut that to zero. I'm now trying to scrape together whatever money I can in order to contribute at least something so that we can be building our OPEB contribution for the long term because that'll pay off dividends for future taxpayers.
Well, then let's open it up to the Finance Committee. What are your thoughts? Have you had a chance to look at this and what do you think? I know you guys met last night.
Yeah, so we met last night and we had gone over the, a lot of expenses. We went through nine items. Yeah, I would like to keep the tax rate the same if possible. I just don't know. You know, so we really went and our main focus last night was to see, because we do need to balance it and to see where all the line items are. David did a great job on, on the budget, but there were a few questions in there that we had that we thought we, there could be some adjustments so that we could talk about. One of the things was that the, we would like to see, it would be great to have a hiring freeze. Like right now, not hiring any new people, new hours, keep everything the same. We don't want to see anybody be let go, but we want to, we don't want to add anymore at this point. We don't want to, we were hoping not to do any more than 2%. If we can even do the 2%, you know, but it'd be nice to just do 2% across the board, which then it's gonna, we're going to be having to ask for help from both Ed and from Dave Nixon to see if, if it's, if it's agreeable with the Select Board. I'd like Ed to reach out to all the kind of people that have the contracts and everyone that has the union negotiations, you know, they can do the union negotiation. And I'd like to see if they could talk to the union and say, you know, during this time, would be happy not to be letting anybody go. So to have a big increase right now, they would, might be acceptable to that, to say, let's push this off to here so that we could do a 2% across the board and not have those other increases. That would be very, very helpful. I, I, that was one thing I, we also wanted to discuss with the Select Board. We are not in, just for a couple other places where we'd be saving money, still not really in favor of adding the extra for the HR. I, I think that would be a place where we could, we've been doing it for years and years. There are some good arguments, but at the same time, we have been doing this for a long time with, and it's made it through, so I think we could still make it through again and save that money and put that into OPEB. Think we could also do and push off the planner, same thing. I think that it's a good idea. I think we could be, make, you know, it could help down the road, but I think we could push it off. I think funding OPEB would be a smart move because, and not all of it, but to show something in there. I've been watching on the news as well where they are looking for, you know, the government's looking to help out in another phase and to help out the towns and stuff. But they don't want to help out towns for bad management in the past. They don't want to help people with their, with their pension funds and stuff like that. And if we show that we're still adding to those pensions and we show all the good things that we're doing with the AAA bond rating, I think we would have a better chance on, on getting any type of funding. And we could show that we are really in the ones that And we could show that we are really in the ones that are in need of that funding due to the hotels and the, it is really, it's totally just the Corona virus that is, is hurting us in, in the revenues right now. And it's really there, those, those people that can't pay the taxes and they can't, in the hotels and the meals tax, I mean, that's a huge thing. The, we did the only real increases where I want to see the increases, you know, we wanted to put more money into the, keep that finance reserve larger just because if you need whichever department ends up falling short, we could just transfer it without town meeting approval. So as long as we have a good amount in there, the transfer to help whichever place ended up needing it. Also, we wanted to keep that money going towards the, for paying down principal in debt so that way if any capital item comes up and we absolutely need it, we could pay for it out of that borrow right now. So that is a good thing.
What was the amount you wanted to keep into the finance?
Side note, just quickly, I didn't want to mention, I did also deal with CPA. I had a CPA meeting on Monday and the CPA monies, right now, the only thing that they could really do would be to help with rents, people's rents. And that's only for your people that are the, the low moderate income. It's, it's for that type of housing. But instead of doing it that way, we feel that the CPA, because we have the monies going to be going and maybe Bill could talk more down the road, we'll be having monies going into the trust fund, the housing trust fund because that's what they're looking at putting on in the warrant. Keep it to finance, oh, for, for what, the rent? I mean, for the CPA you're talking? Oh, oh, the finance reserves is what you're asking. The finance reserves is right now, I think it is at 75,000. If we can put more, that would be great, but I don't know. But that's where, when we're making little adjustments, I'd rather see them come out of some other area, put more into there for when, you know, to move it around, to keep it more liquid.
How much more would you want?
You know, down the road, I would like to see to increase it a little bit more in the warrant. We also are mentioning, we're going to put 25,000 into the unemployment. I would like that instead of going unemployment, go into the finance. That way if the unemployment needs it, we move it to unemployment. But if they don't need it and someone else needs it, you can move it there too. So that was just my thought to keep it more liquid. Because once it's an unemployment, I can't move it back out to give it to someone else if they don't need it. So those are just a few thoughts. Oh, and so the, the money is to help the town instead of CP, going through CPA, we could probably go through the planning board as trustees for the affordable housing trust if that's something that's down the road that's needed. But that's not part of this budget, but I know it's something that has been talked about. I think that, oh, and I do have a few other things that I wanted to mention where we could. I think the 25,000 to move that would be over would be good. That would give the finance, and, and, and I, maybe you have another opinion, I was 10,000 in there. We've only had 50, we don't usually use it. But I mean, I, I just, there is, there's so much uncertainty, I don't know. I, I, so in my, I'm thinking 100, but I'm open to suggestions, whatever everyone else feels.
Well, if we're not weighing any.
We might need to have some increases in the town building operations, not positive, but still being tweaked. This is just one more thing I thought of that I didn't mention yesterday was I would like to see, I know we have a grant for the council on aging and that has to do with we're hiring more drivers and we're hiring, we're doing more things and it's a matching grant, which is great, but that would be great if we could put that off a year and not do it this year. I just don't see this year, you know, a lot of seniors probably getting into those kinds of vans and going to places. If, if we could just put it off a year, I think that would be pretty helpful. So that would be that. And since, since the chief Mason is here on this call, I, there was a question on the budget. Say it again, Joyce? Okay, I didn't catch it. So the only question I was going to have for Chief Mason was we talked on, when we looking at the budget, there was a line item for K9 unit. And I wanted to ask him if that is still going on or if that's something that would be down the road. I, I didn't know. So I just wanted to throw that out.
Yeah, the, the line item, the specific.
I don't know if he caught that. If, your K9 unit is, is that something that's still pending?
The specific line item that you're talking about, the, the old accountant.
Yeah, you're on mute, Chief. No.
No. He's not on mute. He's on mute now.
That's what I have right now, if anybody else would like to chime in.
So Chief.
Can I?
Well, hey.
Okay.
Sorry, Chief.
I, can you hear me now?
I can hear you.
Yep.
Okay.
Poor connection that seems to be about a minute behind everybody else, so unfortunately. So.
Amy says?
Yeah.
Okay, because Mike was trying to talk, but she kept getting in there.
Yeah.
So he couldn't respond to her, her answer. Do you have an answer for her, Mike?
Yeah, I was actually just going to type it out. So I think maybe she'll get that before she gets my voice. But the, the, the K9 program, it's still going to happen as soon as we graduate the three officers from the academy. We can't afford to lose another one right now to the K9 training. But the account number that she is talking about, for whatever reason, I still don't know why, Justin, the past accountant, when he was here, for some reason added the two, the letter and a number, K9, to our full police supply line. I don't know why he did it. It doesn't have anything to do with K9. That money is basically all of the supplies for this whole building. But it's not a K9 line. So I hope that answers your question. I'll, I'll try to type into here so that I can be a little bit more specific. Everybody else hear that at least?
It is.
Yep, lovely.
Lovely. So this word, David, I want to ask about the $28,000 taken from the building maintenance account for fire.
Okay, so this is, which budget are we talking about?
We're talking about, you moved it from fire to maintenance 490.
Yep.
And I thought we had talked about this previously, that Mike needs that in his budget to take care of the fire alarms, the sprinklers, the generator monitoring and other things for public safety. So that money was going to stay in the fire department budget and then you moved it to the building maintenance, which has really nothing to do with any of these things at all.
Did I move it to building maintenance or building operations?
It's 490, so whatever that is.
Building maintenance.
Maintenance.
Yes, I did.
Yeah, so that should go back into Mike's budget for his fire alarms and sprinklers and generator monitoring. And he does that for, throughout the town. So that money should go back. DPW is not going to monitor all those things. That needs to be in his budget. Hello?
I heard you.
Do I need to come through the line and do CPR? How are we there?
I mean, I, I was, I was upfront with everybody beforehand that I was trying to get as many of these responsibilities for building operations, building maintenance out of the department heads' hands and into a consolidated budget.
But again, but again, DPW doesn't monitor these things, so it shouldn't be in their budget. That's not under their purview. They don't have a clue on what's going on with these fire alarms and sprinklers and things. So that should actually please go back into the fire department's budget.
All right, well, whatever you want to do.
I'm going to make a motion that goes back into the fire department. He can't monitor these things from, under the DPW. That's a motion. Anybody want a second?
Hang up. Mike, is that Chief Spanknebel?
Yes, actually, Dave, we, we met with Chris Okafor multiple times on this and we were all in agreement that all of this was, so this is the fire alarm monitoring, the sprinklers, the generators for all the buildings in the town of Hadley. It's not just the fire station. This includes all, all buildings. So that's why there was that increase. I was tasked with putting that, that budget together and getting the proposals from, estimates from the contractor that's doing the new buildings. So that's, that's why we were keeping it under the fire department account, including the, the generator.
And Mike, is it common practice? And this is just a question, would it be common practice for the fire department to be responsible for the upkeep of those items?
Well, we're the ones that do the annual inspections on it and we originally, only the public safety complex had a sprinkler system in it. So we've now added sprinkler systems to three additional buildings or, yeah, the North Station, the Library and the Senior Center are all sprinkled now. So all those are, you know, it's under fire regulation and fire law for maintaining that. So the other reason why we did it is we are attempting to move the monitoring of the fire alarm systems into our dispatch center well, so that we can reduce the cost of having to pay a third party UL listed central station to do that monitoring. We were also, you know, we had probably four or five different companies maintaining, inspecting, testing and monitoring the different buildings in town at one point. So it's, it's taken a number of years to get this so that we're, you know, the, the town hall, the DPW, those systems were upgraded. Now we have similar equipment and we're working towards being able to actually monitor ourselves. So it's, it's, I, again, we met with Chris Okafor on this a couple of times and was, you know, agreed upon by all of us that this is something that really should be monitored and maintained because those are, you know, they're contracts and need to make sure that they're being taken care of. So that's why that happened.
Yeah, I mean, it makes sense.
My comment right now is just that, you know, this is going to be in, this is going to be an expense neutral transfer, so it doesn't affect the bottom line. One of the things that we should do, I recommend that we do tonight is set up a process by which these department heads can come in and make their, the budget that I've put together, whether it works for them or it doesn't work for them, or what a crying shame it is that I put this position or that expense, rather than dealing with it piecemeal. So if we can, if we can reserve time at your next select board meeting on the 20th, we can deal with all of these together.
Well, the only, the only reason I brought it up tonight is that I had a telephone conversation with you about this about a month and a half ago, and we had agreed that it would stay in Mike's budget. And then I see it in the building maintenance budget. That's the only reason I'm bringing it up tonight. Has nothing to do with heads of the, heads of department. I had asked specifically for this to be put back into the fire department budget and, and it's not. So that's, that's the only reason I brought it up.
So just, David, when you talk about having department heads come in front of the select board and the finance committee to kind of plead their case for, for cuts or decreases and line items, I think what, you know, I'd like to do, and I'm looking for feedback, is we allow them, a department head and department head only, not, not anybody else other than the department heads, to come in front of the select board and talk specifically about cuts or decreases only, not wish lists, not additions, not anything else. Because frankly, we don't have the money or the time to devote to that this year due to the circumstances. And we don't need to go over line by line and rehash the entire budget. So that's kind of my thinking as far as addressing this. I know in the past, we've gone line by line and had people request addition, all kinds of mess, and it took a long time.
And I agree with you. It's just not, it's not a request for more money. It's just more money going back into the budget where it had belonged to begin with.
No, I'm not talking specifically about you. I'm just saying, once we get this kind of finalized, you know, a little bit where we want it, maybe next select board meeting, then the department heads could come and talk to us. That's all.
Okay. And, and the other one tonight was, was the cell phone that I talked previously about. The cell phone and cable for emergency management were taken out of the fire department and not the police. And for some reason, just the fire department that should be put back into his line, not necessarily the landlines, but the, at least the cell phones and cables should be in his line item instead of, I don't know, transferred to 190 if David knows what that line item is. So the cell phone, the cell phone issue for the fire and police should stay within their departments for emergency management.
David, can we talk about some of the other things that the finance committee brought up? Yep. Could we talk, start with the, the HR contract? So I thought Amy actually made a fantastic argument and, and actually supported the reason why I think that we really need to continue to stay the course with Deb Radway coming in on a contract basis. I love the, well, I shouldn't say I love, but in light of the circumstances, I think that it's very appropriate for there to be conversation around the biggest line items, and that is people. And I think everybody's very much committed to not having any layoffs. But the union contracts are indeed expensive and they have many, many, many parts in them. And if, if that's even going to be on the table, Deb Radway's got 30 years of experience sitting at the table and working on contract negotiations with unions. So, you know, I, I think that's actually an argument of having that skillset in house. The other concern I have is if we're having tough times, you know, there're going to be a lot of people issues. And anytime that you have a situation where, you know, there's a lot of strife, the nerves are going to be frayed. People are more likely to be under stress and that doesn't always bring out the best employee relations. And the fact that we haven't had an HR director in large part is why we've had so many issues over the years that, in my opinion, and I think it's shared by many, have really cost the town money. When I think of some of the agreements that we've been, you know, made with employees where things just boiled over and then it got too late, I, I just think now more than ever is when we need a solid HR person. And I don't want to go back to having it kind of plug and play with Joan and David Nixon. They're going to have their hands full and their own right. So I, I just think that's something that, that would really be penny wise and pound foolish at this point, you know, with, with Ed going out temporarily, we really need that slot.
Would, as a compromise there, would you be willing to kind of put off the planner position until FY 22 and just continue on the course with the, with the HR position and save the money for the planner? I think that eliminating one of the two would, you know, basically pay for the other. Or, and I think possibly the HR would be a little bit more valuable at this point based on just comments from the planning board and how the planner might, might or might not be used. I know Bill's here, so he could probably speak to that a little bit, but.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think from a priority standpoint, I would say, given what we're faced with. Yeah, I mean, I, I think from a priority standpoint, um, I would say, given what we're faced with, there's, in my mind, that HR. Um, expertise is really critical right now. Um, as far as the planner goes, I think. You know, there, there are two different issues. One is what the planning board is asking for, which is really more administrative help. And I think the other argument is what, you know, I think, you know, Christian made a strong argument at the last meeting to what we think the town needs. Um, and, you know, I, I can totally understand why, you know. People are gonna balk at, at bringing on another body, but I would certainly hope that it might be something that the board looks at maybe mid-year if things aren't quite as. Um, dire, you know, that that position would be looked at because what we're likely being. Going to be faced with is, um, some businesses, let's face it, they're just not going to make it. And the commercial base that we have along Route nine and elsewhere in town, we may need to get creative. Um, and you don't want to do that. After all the businesses are shut down and then scratch your head and try to figure out what zoning you want in place. You want that to be a proactive process. Starting as soon as possible. So, but that's my argument on that one. But yeah, I mean, I think HR is really.
I just would want to say too, is I don't think we're mentioning anything about dipping into our reserve funds here and I. I don't know what the balance is there, but I'm guessing it's over a million dollars in reserves and. If we're talking HR and, um, a planner kind of being the points we're arguing over. Really, it's not that much money, even for a year. We're talking a hundred fifty thousand dollars. I kind of feel like now. If any time is a rainy day, it's right now. And so. We have that reserve fund, so why aren't we looking at that for trying to help? Promote some of these things that could really help the town in the long run, instead of. I guess what Molly said is being penny wise and pound foolish. It's like. You don't want to cut all these things and then find out that we're behind the eight ball now and, and struggling to keep up. When we could just dip into some reserves and pay for. A few of these things and, and maybe reevaluate it in a little bit, but, um, at least do something in the interim.
So what, where, where, where are we getting this million dollars in reserves? Where did that pop up from?
I think he's talking about stabilization. Is that what you're?
Stabilization, yeah, exactly.
Oh, well, you can't use stabilization for, uh, budget. Uh, stabilization has to be used for one-time purchases, uh, of that nature. You don't use stabilization to offset your. Um, day-to-day operations and budget.
So I.
But it's the numbers game. Sorry to interrupt. I mean, if we could use it somewhere else possibly and have money in the budget for. These positions.
I, I want to get to, uh, Bill. I imagine he's got a comment about this, so go ahead, Bill.
Okay, I think you have to unmute me on your end.
Yep, you're unmuted. We can hear you.
Oh, okay. Um, so, on, on the planner, um, I think it's fine to have an economic development planner. Um, I just wanted. But the planning board has been asked for. That's not the help we're looking for. At the first level. Uh, we're looking for, for help in doing our current tasks. We do not have an economic development function at this time, whereas primarily a zoning department. Uh, we, we do the zoning bylaw, we do the permitting. Having a planner would not help with things like changing the zoning. In the short run, because changing zoning has to be done through town meeting, which is a process that. You know, it's a six months from start to finish at best. And we're pretty good at moving it quickly, but. If you want to have an economic development planner, that's fine. That's a different conversation than responding to the planning board's request for support.
I, I, I see what you're saying, Christian, about paying for. You know, things that we need out of stabilization, but I just. To me, the, in, in my mind, the priorities are keeping what we have at this point. And then, you know, in order to do that, if we needed to go dip into stabilization to pay for things in order to avoid layoffs. Or avoid service cuts, that, that in my mind is, is understandable. You know, paying for one-time charges out of stabilization so no one has to be let go. Uh, but I'm a little bit concerned about paying for things so that we can incur new expenses. I mean, the, uh, the HR person, you know, Ed's gone, so we don't have his salary that's being paid there. So, so basically that's. You know, it, it comes out pretty, pretty much even or, or close to it. Um, but the planner is a, a concern of mine. I'm not saying we don't need it, but, um, and Paul, Paul from Finance has a comment.
Yeah, it's my, am I unmuted? It was my understanding that we do have to pay a certain amount of Ed's salary, at least at the beginning, um, some, I think it's a difference between what he gets in the military. So there is a line item in the budget for that.
No, sir, um, I have a, uh. Um, a salary in the military that exceeds, uh, what I get in town of Hadley, so.
Okay.
Um, but there, there, there is money allocated because, um. Uh, the, the date's a little bit up in the air, so there's a, a, a potential for me to, to work during the fiscal year is kind of what it boils down to, so.
Okay.
There's four months allocated for me to work depending on the length of, of the deployment. And then, um, you know, hopefully a month of overlap with Deb or at least a couple of weeks. I don't know that that will happen. Um, but then also, um, you know, to have her have. Uh, a good nine to ten months, um, in the position. So that's really what it's all. Ultimately funded for at the end of the day.
I, I believe one of the suggestions last night when we were talking was the idea of possibly going back to Deb to see what, if we restricted her to. Representing, you know, the discussions with the unions and the contracts and so on that were coming up, if there would be some savings there. You know, our, our concern is we think David's done a great job with trying to trim the budget and trying to look for things that we could live without. I think some of the budget. Uh, items that some of the, um, chairs have put through, you know, to reduce things, um, you know, it's, it's, it's great. But we're also concerned that what if we're wrong and this gets worse and worse? And what can we do? To prepare for the worst without having to plan on using our reserves, because we may need the reserves in another year. We just don't know how bad this is gonna be. We don't know whether the feds are gonna help the states and whether the states are really ultimately gonna even have the money to help the towns. And so that's our concern. And while all the businesses in our area are looking at draconian cuts. You know, um, we're going out of business. Um, we're, we're just trying to be as conservative as possible while reserving. And keeping, preserving the, the level of employment that we have for all our people. So anything that we can prioritize to reduce new hires or. How we're gonna expend that money is, in, in our mind, is something that should be looked at very carefully.
Oh, that's, well, just, just talk about the big picture a little bit in case I'm going back to my. Uh, plan that I put together, uh, defense in depth that. I anticipate a very bad first and second quarters for FY twenty one. But let's say that I'm wrong and that it's actually going to be three or four, even multiple years of, of, of economic downturn. Um, the defense step is set up in order to take into account. Ever worsening situations, using stabilization should be our absolute last resort or using the. Current balance of stabilization is our last resort. Um, for FY twenty one, we're actually adding to stabilization by. Something on the order of two hundred thousand dollars in anticipation of having to need to use that in FY twenty two. Um, similarly in twenty two, we're adding to the reserves in order to, um. Have enough reserves to use for twenty three if we need them. Um, so, that's what defense in depth means is that we are thinking not only how do we balance today. But what, what can do to reinforce certain stabilization fund and other funds for the future? So, in case we. So, uh, just want to give you the, the larger context to frame your comments.
I, I do think that's important because, I mean, there's already talk of UMass not returning in the fall, uh, doing things online. So there goes all our, you know, meal, hotel occupancy taxes and, and everything else along with it. Um, so I, I hate to be, you know, all negative, but I think we can have, is that that money won't be there for next year as well.
Yep. Um, you know, the, uh. Molly's suggestion of possibly, you know, making the decision to, uh, keep on, uh, Deb. Bradway that, to go ahead with that contract and hold off on the planner, I think is a great compromise. I don't know how anybody else feels about it, but I thought that was a great idea. To, you know, put that off for another year and then, you know, will we see where we are? I, I'll mute out, let you guys talk.
I also did want to make a point. There's, you know, there's also a chance that I could not deploy. You know, I could break a leg in training, get in an accident, you know. Possibilities are endless, um, and, and then let's say I have to come back to work coming off active duty, but also be a disservice to the town. So there's, there's also that legal consequence as well.
And I, I still have the position that I feel like it's valuable to try to invest some in the town and look for other opportunities. I think that we. Have a, a long road ahead of us and that we need help trying to navigate that path. And I do think it's worthwhile for us investing, um, in some staff that's gonna help us get there. Because right now we don't have anybody really to, um, do things in the long run. I think once we hire a new town administrator. David Nixon will have some time to do some grant funding and look for opportunities, um, in that. Timeframe while he's still here working with the town, but then after that, we're gonna be. Back to where we are now and we're not gonna have people dedicated to. Looking at ways that we can invest in the town and look for grant opportunities and all those things. So I'm gonna stick on that side, but I understand where you guys are coming from too.
Well, and I guess, you know, going back to one of the things I heard was, um, OPEB. Um. You know, OPEB's a savings account. OPEB is, uh, is very appropriate for us to be doing what we've been doing. Um, but again, we're. Years in front of so many other municipalities, um. You know, I, I would rather see more effort put into. Kind of the, the planning side of things that is going to have long, potential long-term ramifications of revenue generation for the town. Um, we missed one year of OPEB contribution. I don't think that our bond rating's going to hell in a hand basket. And if our bond rating goes down, it's because. Standard and Poor's is gonna downgrade just about everybody because of economic conditions and that's not gonna be our fault.
I agree. I, I'd like to, you know, uh, put off with the planner for right now, at least. Uh, until the fall, um, and see where we are with our budget. Um. And go from there. I think going into the next July through October. Uh, if we can get a better handle on, uh, what our expenses are gonna be or what our surrounding. As David said, uh, our cash pile there with those schools coming back here. Uh, it does gonna make a big difference in our budget, so. I would be in favor of keeping the HR person and holding off on the, uh, planner for right now until the fall. Take a look at it then.
And we, is there a way to kind of make a list of priorities if, um. You know, wha- what we would like to do come fall town meeting, if things are not as bad as, you know. We think they might be, but at the same time, budget and plan as if we're just gonna basically hold level services and. Uh, you know, with things. Um, I know that there's. You know, some people are getting two percent raises, other people are looking for five percent raises, and I just think that. You know, I think what Amy mentioned is, you know, two percent across the board is reasonable for, um, you know, non-union employees that don't have a contract. Um, but, you know, if we're gonna give any raises at all, but, but some of these large increases that are requested, I just, I don't think this is the year. Um, I'm gonna hear about this afterwards, but.
Yeah, there, there's a lot of, yeah, I think there's a lot of mixed. I don't think anybody at this point. Should even consider asking us for a five percent increase right now. Um. I don't think that's fair to everybody else. If we can do, do it equally for everybody, I think that's, it's a lot fair. Uh, if we're gonna do anything at all.
So, and Ed's gonna be able to go and, uh, negotiate with the union?
Um, I spent a considerable amount of time reading the union contracts the other day, Amy. Um, and I'll double check, but I don't recall seeing any with more than a two percent raise in the union contract. Some were actually lower than two, some were one and a half percent, um.
I was, I was thinking that also.
You're breaking up me. I don't know if you said something. I'm sorry.
Okay, so, any other?
Say something about OPEB?
Yep.
The, uh, in, uh, budget on the road is, and there's.
I don't know if it's me, but I'm, everyone's definitely going in and out.
Nah, that's, that's Amy's connection's bad.
She's north of us and we have a bad connection too.
Ly- Lynda, you had a comment?
Um, I, uh, just to address what, uh, Molly had said about, uh, and pull a couple of things together. Um, OPEB, um, someone said it shouldn't, that not to use stabilization for budget. I agree with that. It's a capital. I would like to say, point out that OPEB is actually capital, so it would be, if you're gonna use stabilization for anything, moving it over to OPEB. Would actually be appropriate and then saving something else in the budget that might have been directed towards, if we can pull this back, we'll put it into OPEB. That'd be put in somewhere else, that we could actually go capital to capital with, with, with OPEB. So, um. Um, I, I actually, I'm not certainly looking for full funding of it, but I think it was Amy that said earlier on that. Um, as sort of a good faith, yes, we're still on the plan, we're still in the program, we're still making the contributions. We're not gonna make the two hundred and seventy thousand, but I would, I would not like to see it come back to zero because it's hard to get out of. The hole of zero. I would like to see us put something. I'm think, in my mind, I'm thinking like twenty-five thousand is a good. Good faith effort that we are saying, we're still in this, um, we still want to protect our rating, we still are planning for the future. But we had to set it back to twenty-five thousand in this year of extreme circumstances. And if it needs to come out of capital rather than other part of the budget, I still think it's actually worth it. So even though I would not want to see a stabilization used for the basic operating budget. I think using a portion of that for OPEB and sparing, uh, another, uh, budget. Cut going into that direction is probably, um, appropriate.
And not to mention the fact that you can take it out of cash and buy in a down market, Linda.
And we have, oh my gosh. We put a good chunk in in March and I'll say, oh, and then we had a hundred thousand dollar, um, hundred thousand gain. In one month. We lost over a hundred and one months and then you didn't hear anything from me from that month. But I will tell you, we have gained most of it back and that is also including a portion that we put in when it was low. So we've actually done pretty well off the market because OPEB was the only. Large capital account that we saw a loss. We didn't see a lo- loss in our other, our cap, our, uh, CPA. And our, uh, stabilization. We actually saw gains because a lot of those are in government bonds and notes and, um. Those even in a down market were doing very well. So, as far as our capital accounts. We're in good shape.
So, what do we want to do for, for raises? Do we want to talk about this? Do we want to cap them at two percent across the board? Do we want to?
Two percent would be fine, but did, did anybody else see in the, um, materials that we got? Um, on David's, uh. Points of, about if, uh, free cash to be put in certain places and. Uh, anything over, he had about five hundred and twenty thousand dollars that he was. Uh, aiming to put into stabilization. Uh, did anybody else see that with, uh, leftovers on certain budget items? And David can chime in. I saw where there was about. Five hundred and twenty thousand dollars earmarked for stabilization. Is, is that, am I, was I right in seeing that, David?
That's right. That's part of the strategy of defense in depth of, uh, reinforcing your reserves. Whenever you possibly can in anticipation of needing those reserves in the future.
So, would that be, would that be a thing where we could? Put partially some of that into, back into stabilization and, uh, maybe put some of it into OPEB or. Um, other things that we were, were looking at when I was looking at that and it still had in there two seventy for. Uh, the OPEB and now it doesn't sound like that that's a feasible thing. uh, the OPEB and now it doesn't sound like that that's a feasible thing for us to do, but why couldn't we take some of that money that you were planning on, as Linda suggested, and putting something into OPEB uh, instead of the 520 into stabilization, but putting something uh, into OPEB on that, on that monies?
If we're going to do that, I would recommend that we do that at the fall town meeting rather than the, the annual. We simply don't know what's going to happen. And you may find that you need every bit of those reserves at the fall town meeting.
Okay. But I want to make sure I wasn't seeing what I wasn't supposed to be seeing, but I did, I did see that, correct?
Did see that as a, a clever and wise, uh, putting away of uh, reserve, of money into reserves for in anticipation that you're going to need to use those reserves. And therefore that you're in a situation where you're not depleting the reserves, but ever building reserves and then uh, spending out of them as you need them.
Okay. Thank you.
Molly and Christian, what do you think about the 2%? Cause I just want to get that issue out of the way as far as uh, budgeting.
I, I would just say, for me, I would just say, let's review the contracts. Where do we have a conflict that it's more than that? Is there? I don't quite know where the 5% is coming from. Is that in somebody's contract or just a request? I would also be happy with just saying maximum 2%, unless the contract is lower or something like that to make it easy.
Yeah, I agree with that.
I'd, I'd have to look at individual contracts, but I don't think there's a individual contract with a 5%. I believe that was a one-off individual request that um, was deferred. I believe it was deferred in an executive session, but I had to double check the minutes. Uh, but based on the faces you all made, I, I don't think you're in favor of that. And obviously with the conversation now, um, uh, you know, definitely not in favor of it. So um, I can look back at all the contracts and, and see who has more than a 2% raise and uh, talk to that individual about their willingness to um, amend that for FY 2021.
Paul had something.
Yeah, just I think last night it came up, I think it was either water, sewer or, or highway that um, that there was a cup, that the raises were higher than 2%. That, and I think that was the only place where it came up, I think. And, and I think David said it was a union contract thing. So that may be some places to check. That's my recall.
And Chief Mason had something as well.
Uh, are we talking about union contracts with this, the 2% cap? Or are we talking about employment contracts for single employees?
Nah, I, I was referring to non-contract employees that, that didn't have a contract, because I know that there's um, you, you know, we, we typically do the union raises and then we do some sort of COLA or, or, or raise for town hall employees and, and other people that don't have contracts.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure just because, you know, in dealing with union issues and talking about caps and things that are already negotiated, we're going to get into the weeds as far as labor practices go, um, you know, just right off the top.
Yeah, I mean, if Ed can work something out with them, great, but uh, my, my faith in that happening is not very good at this point, so.
Well, I mean, you know, you, there's certain departments, like just to give you an example, I, I went over and I sat with David Nixon uh, this past week and so as with this, with the defensive line strategy that he's been talking about and what everybody I think wants to make sure the bottom line is that we keep employees. Um, you know, I made reductions in several other lines where we really can't afford to make reductions to ensure that the officers get what they negotiated. So I'm walking into F, the next fiscal year. $7,000 decrease in the budget as we stand while making sure that they get what they negotiated. So, you know, departments like that out there that hopefully can sandbox like that, but I also don't want to pit uh, you know, unions against each other either, because there's some departments that probably can't do that.
Right. And, and by concern is there seems to be people that are asking for raises or expecting raises and then asking for lots of wish list items and budgets on that, which just, I don't see it happening.
Yeah, those are all gone from my, my budget. Those are right off the top on.
And if I could, Annie McKenzie, if, if I could just, I think I'm hearing you folks correctly, I just don't want anybody who's watching to hear something that is not being said. So, so if I'm wrong, correct me, because I'm not trying to state my position. I just don't want anybody freaking out and might be watching and who might have a negotiated union contract. So I don't hear you as saying that the select board completely acknowledges that everything they do will be in accordance with fair labor practices and that nothing would ever occur unilaterally without impact bargaining where it was warranted. Is that an accurate statement? I just don't want anybody listening to this and getting the impression you've said something you haven't.
Yeah, contracts are contracts. We're gonna abide by them unless we can negotiate something else. If we can't negotiate something else or get some concessions, then the existing contracts will stay.
So David, fair labor practice, that's all you have to say. Yep.
All right, so, so what's, what's next? What do we want to go on? Or what's our course of action here? Are we gonna focus a little bit more between finance and uh, the town administrator and then bring this back next week or next meeting, I should say, to uh, speak with department heads or how are we going to tackle this?
If there's any, I would like to say if they had any issues that they would kind of resolve them be in the, within the next two weeks. Um, department to department, uh, having either to talk to David or finance and uh, bring it back to us as a clean go for next, in a couple of weeks.
And we, let's uh, talk about, you know, who's going to come in front of the select board in the finance committee again? Is it going to be some, a department head that disagrees with a unanimous decision by the town administrator in the finance committee? Uh, do, you know, if, if the finance committee and the town administrator can't agree on something, do we talk to them? I just don't want to have everybody in, in front of the select board and taking up a lot of time.
Can I just ask the finance committee what their schedule is for reviewing this revised budget? Are you guys done with your review or are you taking it in increments?
Hold on one second. Yep, Amy, you there? Good.
Yeah, can I, uh, I'm not sure if I, you can hear me, but the, we were done right now, um, talking to all the departments, but this had come out, so we thought, you know, we met yesterday, we wanted to hear what you had to say today. And we would probably uh, schedule another meeting um, to go over this again and then meet with you again. I don't know if you heard me.
We're all brain dead, but yes, that sounds fine.
Would it, would, would it be helpful if I took the budget and made the changes that we've discussed last night and tonight? Um, and uh, we can uh, use that as a base budget for discussions on the 20th. And those changes would be the uh, planning board position uh, for economic planner that we would defer that for one year uh, that we would add back into the, for the administrative support. Uh, that we would scrape together whatever we possibly can and put that into OPEB. And that uh, use the contracts and tells us where we have a greater than 2% increase in any of the contracts. And then we discuss what to do about that. Uh, the only other wild card out there right now that we have any control over is the fuel bids, which are due on May 18th. And given fuel prices, we may get a lucky bounce out of those. And I may be able to adjust the budgets so that whatever savings we get from fuel costs, we can put that back into OPEB.
I think we should jump on the field prices right now, absolutely.
Uh, Dan Zidaneck had a, a comment that he wanted to make on revenue. Dan?
Hi, uh, at the financial management team last week, I brought up a question that I think the board kind of needs to clarify. It's the, the keeping with the tax rate the same for next year. I'm under the impression you want to keep the average tax bill for the average person the same for the average house. As opposed to raising the two and a half percent that we can, that we can raise additionally, which is another 290,000. The budget that David's got here has that 290 in it.
Yeah, I, that, my take on it i- is the opposite. I would like to see the rate, the 278, I believe is what it is for FY 20, remain the same for FY 21. Um, I know that depending on what happens with house values and whatnot, you know, that may be a, a decrease, I don't know, or it could be a slight increase depending on how house values shake out. Um, but I think that being able to say that, look, we kept the rate the same, we made the cuts and the changes that we need to will go a long way for people that don't have jobs at this point.
Well, the preliminary information that we have are the study that I've done. We're looking at about a 5% jump in value based on last year's sales. So adding in the, the two and a half percent, the tax rate would go from 1278 to uh, 1252. So it would drop, it would go down, but the average bill would go up about a hundred and twenty dollars. Cause he's got that, that increase in value.
Yeah. So I guess for somebody like, like Molly that knows about this stuff a lot better than, than I do, or the, the, the finance committee, uh, what's better for a long-term setup? Do we want to, you know, drop the actual rate like that or keep the actual rate the same or what are, what are we trying to, okay, what's, what's best in the long term?
Well, I mean, I, you know, I don't think that there's any question, if we tried to keep everything level with these assessed values that we have little or no control over. We're, this conversation is going to get a lot harder. And I, I actually thought that this tax rate itself, even with um, what was going on was staying the same. I didn't realize it was dropping down 20 cents or whatever. Um, David Nixon, did you know that it was dropping?
Oh, we don't know that it is dropping because this is something that's going to be uh, decided in the fall town meeting because we need to wait for the assessors to get the valuations approved by the Department of Revenue. Uh, you know, so that's one variable among many, many, many other variables. So if keeping everything uh, assuming everything else is even, then there is a possibility that the tax rate would drop because the house values would increase.
So, uh, yeah.
But we, but we don't know that for sure at this time.
Right, so we couldn't really plan for that anyway, but would you agree that if we tried to keep the tax bills level, that that's a whole nother ballgame?
I think then you set yourself up for a double increase this time next year.
Exactly.
You're more likely than not to set yourself up. Again, there's so many very
So then we should be aiming to keep the rate the same for now and then just see how the rates end up coming back from the Department of Revenue. Is that what we're looking at?
Looks at, Mike.
That's what I would say right now is the test with the budget that you think is most responsible now, and then we will make the adjustments. So we have to uh, in the fall, given better information.
Okay, so.
That answered Dan's question then?
Yes.
Okay. And it's out of curiosity, looking at the rates in the past, it looks like, I'm looking at, God, I don't know what page of this budget amended. There was a significant drop in rates in 2004 to 2006. Um, so we could be looking at something like that, who knows, but it looks like in the past, the rates have dropped quickly.
Yeah, before my time, so I couldn't speak to that with precision.
I just make one quick comment. It's Sue Glawinski. Um, so whereas we didn't have um, override type votes the last time around, that's why the rate would drop so much, correct, Dan?
Uh, yeah, there's no new, as far as I know, there's no new increase in taxes due to new override money. But the rates would go down because right now we're at our maximum levy.
Right.
If values go up, the rate has to drop. Or we'd be in violation of two and a half and DOR won't approve our tax rate.
And there's debt coming off as well.
Uh, I don't believe there's any override debt, that that number is not going down.
Not in the next 12 months.
Okay. Just wanted to ask the question.
Okay, so do we know what we're doing now? Uh, finance is going to work on this and more with David and then um, whatever can't be worked out between finance and the town administrator, the department heads can come back in, in front of the select board um, and kind of plead their case. But uh, I, I'd like to see that if, you know, if they disagree with both uh, the finance committee and the town administrator, I don't really want to hear that case because I, I mean, that's just me, but what does everybody else think?
Depends what it is. I mean, I don't want many, many, you know, minute things to come back to us, but if it's, it's something that they think should be in their budget or whatever, I think, you know, we should hear it, but I'm hoping it'll just get settled, settled between finance and David.
And I say that we appoint the chair as the tiebreaker under such, situation.
I'll second that. That sounds good.
Email the chair all of your complaints, that's all.
They're already rolling in, it's okay.
Do not increase the taxes, that's what you're hearing.
Yeah. Um, all right, so let's move on. Um, Fire Station, Library and Senior Center updates.
Good, yep. Just wanted to say goodnight.
Goodnight.
Bye, Paul.
Goodnight, thanks.
Goodnight, chief.
Yeah, I think that's it for HR too. If you need me though, text me, I'll come back on.
Goodnight, Ed.
Night, Ed.
Goodnight, Ed.
All right, so uh, Fire Station, Library and Senior Center, who wants to go first?
Uh, I could go. You want me to go?
Sure.
Okay, so we had some change orders, uh, which we voted on uh, prior to, I think they're just going to need some uh, signatures, uh, PO change number 20, that was the range hood uh, that we had voted on. Um, that was eight 23. Uh, propane fill, we filled up the tanks, that came to $4,448 and 22 cents, so that'll need a signature also. That's PO uh, number 34. We had a motorized damper that they had to install, that was $2,897. That's PO change order number 36. And we approved these through the uh, finance because they were under 10. Um, additional electric work had to be done in that uh, uh, area of uh, the desks and all of the equipment that's going to go in there, that came to 1785. And that would be change order two six R one. And that was that, and then they've gone out to bid for the uh, setup for the desks and things like that in the uh, um, main office room there. So that's gone out to bid because it's over, over 10. And that's it. Everything is moving along. Uh, if you drive by, it's looking pretty good. We have a final completion date for July 13th. Uh, remaining balances of today was uh, 451,200 dollars. Uh, we are looking at a couple of other things uh, about putting conduits in uh, so that we can run lines from center to up there. Uh, so that may be something that we'll look at um, before this project is done. We're, we're getting some prices on that right now. Uh, because of Mount Warner and that tower up there, it seems to block, as you can tell with Amy and Linda. Uh, it's not a good uh, setup for communication, so we're looking at how we can rectify that in this by running some conduits uh, up that way. So I'll bring that forth at that time, okay?
Joyce, did you need a motion for any of those changes or are you, they're good because you got them all passed through finance?
Correct, and they're all under 10, yes.
Okay. Okay.
So we're all good on those. Uh, we will have to have one when the, uh, change order for the, uh, what do I want to call it? Council, uh, things in the, uh,
Dispatch.
Yes, dispatch area. Thank you. I've got a brain going there. Um, so that will come through to us in a, in a little while. We'll have to approve the, um, bid document on that. And that's it. Everything looks good. They're going to be lining and paving and sidewalks and finishing up. The doors are on, um, so everything seems to be moving right along, uh, as are the other buildings also. So looking good.
All right. Library?
Uh, library. So we have a library building committee meeting, uh, this coming Monday. Um, so I don't really have much new information after, um, they were, uh, for the select board last week. You know, getting an update there. So, uh, David Nixon, I don't know if you've heard anything different. When I went by, they were still working on the tidying up the roof and everything and making it air tight.
Yeah, they're all green go. Everything is full systems ahead.
So nothing new on change orders or anything like that at this point.
Okay. And Jane from senior center? Uh, you're muted.
Yeah, okay. Senior center is doing fine. Um, they're doing grading. Final things are happening. We're looking at a CO on the 18th of May, possible move date of the 20th. And take our need to have most holy redeemer out of the cost of the town. And moving right along. It's looking exciting.
Uh, let's go down to, I'm going to pass over the marijuana, uh, line item here or budget or agenda item, I should say. Uh, let's do the end of year accounting and other financial matters. David, are we, what do we need to do here?
Uh, we don't need to do anything right now, but, uh, this is an item that's going to be showing up on your agendas for the next month and a half because we're in the final phases of FY20. Uh, we do have a new action plan for the end of the year for getting things done, free cash certified, all the, all the balances, end of year report. Getting the audit done, uh, early this year, all with the being able to, uh, make the final borrowing in November. It will require, uh, strict adherence to deadlines, having to do with reserves, expenditures, transfers, uh, encumbrances, uh, and other matters like that. And then the, the tolerances are going to be tighter than we've had to deal with in prior years. And so I'll work with the departments, stunt, make them understand that, um, we need to be uh, thinking about deadlines and adhering to those deadlines in terms of paying invoices and incurring expenses and, uh, making transfers, uh, and submitting revenues to Linda. Budget is still in good shape for right now through March. I haven't gotten the April revenue or expenditure report yet, but I'll get that, uh, shortly. But, uh, as of March, we were right on target for both expenditures and revenues. And, uh, that's it for right now on that, on that matter.
How about, uh, town administrator's search update?
Yeah. So MRI got in touch with me and they said that would we be at all interested in deferring the deadline for applications? Uh, right now, Monday, May 11th at 4:00 PM is the, the deadline. Uh, they do have applications in hand and I talked to at least two people who are going to submit over the weekend. But they're extended, asking if we extend the deadline to June 1st, some date beyond the governor's, uh, ordered things be shut down until the 18th of May. That would give, um, potentially could attract more applications. If we did extend it by three weeks, that means that we have a start date in August or September for the new town administrator. That means I can, um, uh, achieve some savings in that line item. Uh, but it does mean that we would have, um, less time for the transition for the, of the overlap of the two town administrators. What's the pleasure of the board?
I think it's a good idea to extend it a little bit. I just think given right now, a lot of people that might apply would are preoccupied with other things and we have a little bit of a buffer in our schedule. So I, I can make a motion that we move the, the, uh, the deadline to June 1st.
I'll second that. Okay.
Yep. Whatever. We're in agreement.
Yeah, but I think we should still try to get somebody on, um, you know, as soon as we can. I, I think that's really important to still try to get them on board in August. And I would think if the deadline's June and they go through their screening and then the select board's doing their interviewing, that should still be a viable possibility.
I agree.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Okay.
So I asked you to save a date at June for the interview for the final candidates. And obviously we, we're going to release that, save the date because we'll have to reschedule that.
It's like we're getting married. Save the date.
Save the date.
All right, David, and, uh, town administrators report anything you want to hit on?
Um, I'm touched on a lot of the things. Let me pull it up here.
Don't forget the alternate building and
Yep, we'll get that next.
Right. So we touched on a lot of things that are on my report here. We, uh, our audit for FY19 is substantially complete. And we are, um, we are reviewing draft documents and it should be, uh, we should have an audit, uh, in your hands in the next, uh, week or so. Uh, the MVP grant that we are submitting for $300,000 grant for the priorities that were identified in the planning grant. That is on underway. We've got the two community block grants, one for 550,000 for housing rehabilitation. And the other one is whatever our share of 20 million is, uh, going to be for emergency aid to local businesses. And, uh, let's see. And, uh, the end of year report schedule A has been accepted by the department of revenue. So that project is substantially complete. Uh, that has been the budget and, uh, town meeting. So that's all I've got right now.
All right. And then so under items not anticipated, 48 hours in advance, uh, Tim Nyheart, who recently retired, expressed his interest in, uh, becoming an alternate building inspector. Um, and, uh, the, the new building commissioner, Tom Quinlan, uh, would like to see that happen as well. So if, uh, to get a motion to appoint, uh, Tim Nyheart as an alternate.
So moved.
Second.
And any further discussion? All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Hi. Okay. Um, any announcements?
No, I didn't do a good job this week. I have to be better prepared next, next time.
Okay.
Uh, you can get us, Spargisson Hadley.
Yes, you can. There are some stands that are open.
All right. Anything else?
Nope. Stay safe.
Yeah, the, I guess Jennifer just brought it up, um, May 16th, right? The election.
Yes.
Very important. Let's, uh, I think it's not too late yet to record, uh, request an absentee ballot. Is it? What is the one's the cutoff?
Today was the last day.
Oh, okay. So it is. All right.
And town meeting is still set for June?
June 18th right now.
June 19th. Okay.
Eighteen.
Eighteenth.
All right.
So I just want to say one thing real quick since, uh, realizing the vote is May 16th, our next meeting is May 20th. I just want to thank Molly for her years of service on the select board. It's her last meeting tonight. Anti-climactic, uh, end here that we're all on Zoom meeting and not in person. But thank you for all your work on the board and, uh, everything you've done for the town. I just want to say, say that, um, from everyone, I guess, but from me especially. Thank you.
Do you have
Yeah, I'm gonna miss like this.
I'd like to say that too. I mean, we've had, uh, quite a few number of years, uh, together. That's for sure. We've been, you, between you and finance and school, we've all kind of hit each other one way or another. But these last few years have been, uh, uh, enjoyable most of the time. We have, we haven't always agreed, but that's all right. That's a, it's the right to agree and disagree, right?
That's right.
And respect one another's decisions and views. And I think we've been able to do that. So, um, you brought a lot of, uh, different aspects to the town and, uh, finance. I've been very grateful that you've been there financially for us to, uh, to get us through those times. So with your knowledge, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Molly. Thank you for serving on the select board. Thank you for hiring me. So you did that, uh, six years ago. I appreciate you being a part of the board that got me to Hadley. So I couldn't be happier. So thank you for that. Thank you for being a great school committee member and an excellent supportive select board person for the students and families of Hadley. I really appreciate it.
Thank you, Annie.
And I hadn't turned off the video because by this time at night on Zoom, I mean, stuff just really starts to fall apart. I don't know about the rest of you, but I, I can't take it anymore.
So thank you, Molly, for your years of service. When I first met you, you were on the finance committee. I think you had just been appointed. And I was the new town administrator after a long tenure with Robin Crosby. And, uh, it was, uh, an enjoyable experience working with you on the budgets. And, uh, way back in 2006, I think it was. Uh, and then working with you on the school committee and then working with you as a select board member. Uh, it's been a pleasure the entire, all 15 years of it.
Same here, David. Yeah. And so, yeah, I just want to say thank you again. I've said it repeatedly. Um, if people don't appreciate the, the discipline employees and volunteers, then they're not paying attention. It's what makes the town work. Um, and I know I've gotten a lot out of it. I've learned a lot. I'm sure everybody who's serving currently learns a lot. Uh, it's amazing what we don't know when we wake up in the morning and the water just comes out of the faucet and it's a miracle, right? But, um, so I've, I've certainly enjoyed the time and obviously you're not completely getting rid of me because I'll still continue in some capacity on some subcommittees. But, uh, again, I hope, uh, I think honestly, you know, for the boards I've served on, the current composition of the select board's been great to work with. Again, eclectic mix of viewpoints, but people are very respectful of each other. And I'm very hopeful that after the election, that that same camaraderie will continue. So.
All right. So we going out for drinks when all this goes over. Okay?
I know, Joyce. Yeah.
We'll do it. We will do it for sure. Okay.
All right. So, uh, we'll see everybody back on, uh, May 20th, 5:30 on Zoom. And if I could get a motion to adjourn.
Our second one or the other.
All right. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
All right. Good night.
Good night, everybody. Stay healthy.